They haven't done anything to the trail specific.
Good evening, everybody. It being five thirty, we'll bring the planning commissioner meeting for Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-five to order. We'll call Chris.
Ms. Proper. Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
Um, Ms. Gort.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes? Everybody good? Okay, the minutes will stand. Any changes to the agenda, Chris?
There are no changes tonight.
With that, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone, and then star six to unmute yourself. Do we have anybody attending online or by phone, Ellie?
No.
Anybody in the audience? Okay, with that, we'll close any public comment on historic preservation issues. And with that, we will move to work sessions. And we have the chalet, brequillage, change of use, employee mitigation relief. Ellie would like to present.
Um, before you tonight is the chalet, brequillage, change of use, employee mitigation relief work session. On the proposed business would change a space of two thousand three hundred and ninety-four square feet from a bar space to a counter service fondue restaurant. Um, it's located in units H I N J of five hundred and South Main Street. Um, and the applicant is requesting feedback from the commission regarding the employee housing impact mitigation rates required by policy twenty-four. Um, the commission has previously supported requests, um, similar requests from Highside Brewing, Faux Real, and Barretto nineteen thirty-one. Um, the space in question is the location of the former Brooklyn's Tavern, a pool hall and bar with no food service. Um, and the applicant proposes to convert it to a cocktail lounge and fondue restaurant, which would qualify as fast food and counter service. Um, the proposed conversion would require one hundred and fifty-four square feet of employee fa- housing or a forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six uh dollar fee in lieu. Um, and you can see the full calculation um for that rate in the packet. Um, for some background on the determination of the uses, um, the bar that previously existed in the space, Brooklyn's Tavern, um, was a bar with no food service. Um, so staff categorized the business as a tap house slash brewery slash bar without food service. Um, and the new restaurant that is proposed to go in there um includes food service, but is essentially a form of counter service where customers will not be served at their table. They will order from a QR code and then go pick up the food um from the bar. Um, so staff categorized the um use as fast food slash counter service. Um, and the conversion generates an additional one point two six employees, of which point forty-four employees are required to be mitigated. Um, the applicant did provide um proposed employee numbers um and staff propo- um, staff pulled records of it Brooklyn's employee numbers from a survey that was previously done of town um to compare the uh employee generation of each business. Um, and we found that Brooklyn's Tavern um generated a total of eight point five employees um during its highest season, um, which that includes um part-time employees being counted as half of a full-time employee. Um, and then the chalet proposes to generate a total of six employees during their highest generation season. Um, staff has drafted um a condition of approval for the project um that would go in the findings and conditions um if the um change of use um or if the employee generation um relief is approved. Um, and then uh staff has um several questions for the commission.
Great. Thank you, Ellie. Mark, would you like to open us up with the questions, comments?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you. It's very clear.
Thank you, Mark. Mike?
Uh, no questions.
Any comments?
Well, we'll save comments for the comments section.
Well, we can have them both at the same time. That's fine.
Thank you.
Matt?
I don't have any questions now.
Um, I have a question about the category. So we're saying it's, let me look at the table in here. We're moving from bot- tap house brewery bar without food service to the counter service, fast food. Um, I'm curious about what the definition of counter service is.
So we um, we don't have um fast food and counter service defined within our code. It's more of a common term. Um, within the employee generation code, um, there's a section for restaurants, and that section is split into a subsection of either sit-down table service or fast food counter service. Um, so with those two categories to work with, it's kind of the um, if someone's being served at a table, then it would be sit-down table service. And if someone is going to a bar or to a counter of some kind to go pick up the food and order and everything, then we'd consider it fast food counter service.
But a bar would be, you could get your drinks from the counter, right? Or?
Yeah, so the um restaurants is anything with food service. So Tap House Brewery Bar is a separate section from restaurants because it does not have any food service.
So as soon as they have food service, they kick into the?
Into the restaurant section.
Eight.
Um, so as soon as they have food service, they'd um move from the Tap House Brewery Bar without food service section to the restaurant section, which can either be sit-down service or fast food counter service.
Okay. Have you ever done like prorating based on like bar area? Because people are just getting mostly drinks there versus like sit-down table in a different part of the restaurant? Have you ever done calculations like that where you kind of merge them together or take an average?
I, these numbers, um, the, I, I will say the specific restaurant categories were something that were newly adopted in the code changes that we recently did. Um, so previously it was not broken down to this extent. Um, so I don't know of anything that we've really done in that exact way. Um, I do know there was a previous approval where we um had a space split between restaurant service and retail, um, where we said like this portion of the space is retail and this portion of the space is restaurant. Um, but I believe that's something more unusual and it's not something we do very often.
I think that's my question for now.
Good. Alan?
Uh, thanks. So Ellie, I, I just want to confirm. So we're, are we being asked to approve this calculation and the, in lieu fee or to waive that?
Um, the applicant is asking if the commission would support a deviation from the required um either um of square footage of employee housing to be provided or the fee in lieu um because the applicant um provided information to try to prove that um they are not increasing the use. Um, staff does not have a specific recommendation.
Okay, so, so this is what, if we don't approve the deviation, then uh it means that the applicant would have to pay this fee.
Correct.
So the applicant's asking us to approve a deviation, so um, so my next, uh, so one is there's a mistake in your, the bottom of the pro- uh proposed conversion that you have two hundred and eighteen square feet times two eighty-four. It should be uh one fifty-four, the second to the bottom of that table.
Um, oh.
Right above total.
Yeah, okay.
That changed the amount?
No, the, no, the amount's correct. It says that two eighteen should be one fifty-four.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I apologize. I was working from a previous staff reports. I missed that.
So, uh, so I guess my question, if we're using the, the previous tenant as an example, did they serve food, Brooklyn Tavern?
Um, Brooklyn's did not have any food service.
So they did not serve food, but they had uh eight point five employees.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant serving food and they say they can do it with six employees.
That's correct.
Um, only question I have now.
Thanks, Alan. Ellie, can you remind us, um, on the Highside Brewery Tap Room, there was no food service there, was there?
There was not.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have for now. I'm, I see that, I'm assuming you're the applicant. And we have your, your letter. Would you like to uh give us any additional comments?
First of all, uh, my name's Terry Barbou, um, and thank you guys for hearing this out. Um, I've done a lot of restaurants in this town. I've done Bangkok Capital, uh, Flipside, Blue Stag, Whiskey Star, Brequillage Jailhouse Pizza, Luigi's uh door. Those are all my designs, all my concepts, you know, all the things that I've done in this town over the last thirteen years. I mean, I believe in this town. I love this town, but I think we've kind of gotten to a point where this is asking too much um on this. We, the whole part of this code that's just says they're either, if you do a new build or you change the intensity of employees, that's where the mitigation comes in. And I've proven, just because Brooklyn's ran a really bad business and just because they decided not to do the things that would save them and from being basically removed from any type of insurance or this town, um, doesn't mean that if I do a good job that I should have to pay for it. And that's kind of my frustration is the fact that we're just trying to create a upscale thirty-plus place. It's a speakeasy. So yes, it has tables, but not like a regular restaurant. There's only eight seating groups in the entire place. So it's not this huge, you know, we're going to take twenty, three hundred square feet and turn it all into table seating, because it's not. It's all couches. It's all cocktail tables. It's a place that people can go after they go out to dinner that are a little bit older. They don't want to go stand in a bar. They don't want to, you know, do things along those lines. And so that's what chalet is. We went to Switzerland. We're designing a nineteen twenties uh chalet on the interior with logs and furniture. I mean, we have a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar furniture uh placement ready to go over at iFurnish for this place. I mean, it's going to be absolutely beautiful. It's going to be something that'll drive people into this town. It's something that I think will make national attention. But it's frustrating to me that I've got to buy a house in order to remodel a restaurant, you know, and that's all I'm doing. I already paid a lot of those piffs that you guys asked for by buying it from the previous owner. That's what he sold it on. He didn't have insurance anymore. He couldn't run that restaurant anymore. So that's what we did, but we're taking a tavern license and turning it into a tavern license. We're taking the same number of employees and keeping them, we're redistributing them, but we're keeping that same number going. And just because they didn't serve food when they are legally required to serve food, doesn't mean that I shouldn't do something good if I'm going to have to serve food. So that's basically it. We're taking nine employees of what they ran on a full-time basis, and we're doing nine employees. You know, we'll obviously drop down in, in shoulder season, but I think this restaurant will generate, or if you want to call it a speakeasy, because that's what it is, this speakeasy will generate three times the revenue of what Brooklyn's did. So that's, that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Yeah. Alan, would you start off with questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I was um, so I guess um you're saying that, I guess, when Brooklyn Tavern had a lot of people's, is that it was more like it was packed with people like shoulder to shoulder or?
I mean, in the beginning, um, obviously the pool tables take up space, but yes, it was absolutely packed shoulder to shoulder in there. Um, they would run a DJ in there basically five nights a week towards the end, you know? In the beginning, they had food. In the beginning, they did things the way that the liquor laws require. You know, and then over time, they just got away from everything and they turned more into a situation where you guys probably know this, they've had three severe uh injuries out of that place. You know, the police were there every single night almost. We are absolutely getting rid of that whole attitude, that whole crowd and, and going with something more mature. But bottom line is they had the same number of employees as we're going to have. We are not changing the intensity of employees. We're simply rearranging them into a better way to make this place what it is.
So uh, so I see that they had three security people. I mean, do you, do you, is that a area that you're cutting back or?
Yeah, we're not. So uh, first of all, we do a lot of different training than they do. You know, we, we train people in how to de-escalate situations, not escalate situations. But we're not trying to create that kind of space. You know, we're designing a speakeasy, and I think everybody's got a vision of what a speakeasy is. I mean, our main couch is thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars in the middle of the space. It's just, you know, this is not a place that's going to be like this. This is going to be quality. It's going to be beautiful. Um, you know, it's just going to be different than a bar. So yeah, they had three security guys and even that wasn't enough for them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ellie?
I have some questions about the off-site food prep. How much that will increase late labor at your other restaurants?
So we've got, you know, I've got four other restaurants right now. The pizzas will be prepared, the flatbreads. So we're doing three things, cha- uh fondue, uh flatbread pizzas and charcuterie. Um, Whiskey Star already does a ton of cheese prep and meat prep and everything along those lines. So it's not going to increase any employees there. It's just going to give them something to do during the downtimes. Whiskey Star does all of their food cooking. Everything up is prepped before we even open at eleven o'clock. After that, it's just maintaining those food levels and it gives them perfect time that they can do this other prep work. As far as the um fondue, it's a sous vide. So you get the cheese in a packet. It goes into a hot water sous vide. It comes out and then it just gets poured into the fondue dish, uh, which keeps it hot. And then the last thing, like you said, is the flatbread pizzas, which we're doing up at Ale House, bringing down and then just putting them in a, what's called a uh convection microwave oven, and it basically heats them up in two minutes and then they get served. So it, that's not going to increase. We have, yeah, I mean, daytime at, at uh Ale House pizza is very slow. We can make thousands of pizzas during that time.
So what I'm hearing is it's not going to impact.
We already have the employees standing around doing nothing. We'd rather give them something.
About like dishes, because you're going to have these fondue pots.
Sure. We have a dishwasher that's going in. The kitchen is mainly a, a cleanup area. It's got two big uh pan sinks. It's got a dishwasher in it. Um, it only has one cooler. It has one of those turbo prep, uh, those turbo microwaves that I was talking about um and a hand sink, and that's it. So everything kind of comes down. It's prepackaged. Cheese is already cut. Meat's already cut. It gets assembled there and taken out or dropped off now. I would love to do this right, you know, I would love to make this. It's just a showcase for this town. You know, but like again, it's, you know, if I have to do counter service to save spending two hundred thousand dollars on a deposit on a house and then deed restricting it and dropping it by three hundred thousand in value, it's more than I'm spending on most of this project, you know? So.
All right, um, I have another question. I can't see it right now.
Matt? So uh, just as a question about like business model or whatever. So you, the cocktail waitress will bring out drinks, but then you'd have to go up to the counter to get the food?
It's crazy, isn't it? Could I, I'd love for those two employees to actually be able to bring the food out, but then it's considered table service.
Right.
There's only eight tables. You know, I'm stuck with the ruling of we've got to do it this way. So if that's the way that you guys want it, then, you know, uh, that's the way I think it should be. Um, obviously, I'm trying to create an experience. The alcohol drinking is going way down. You know, people are drinking a lot, lot less. So we're trying to create an amazing experience for a guest, uh, not just trying to create a, a bar that you go to. This is a place that all of you will enjoy. I mean, absolutely. This is not for kids. This is for when you're going out on a special occasion. This is when you're, you know, out for a special night. This is where you'll want to go. It's beautiful. Like I said, everything's Chesterfield couches. It's every, it's everything of a nineteen twenties speakeasy in a swish LA.
Thanks, man. Mike? Questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Mark?
No questions.
Thank you, guys. Like I said, I'm taking nine employees and making nine employees.
Oh, I, I have a question about.
Sure.
Sorry, about the condition thing they wrote up in here about how if you go over six employees and things like that. Have you ever seen, is that something we do commonly? It seems.
I don't know. I mean, I put that we're going to have nine employees on our busiest night. You know, I mean, I kind of broke it down for you guys in that letter as to how we'd use those employees. Um, yeah, you know, this, like, again, this is.
Be six would be part-time employees and three.
On the, I mean, in the winter time, I mean, obviously we all realize this, between December fifteenth and, and basically the first week of April, it's all hands on deck. But after that, things slow way down, you know, to a point where this, you know, even we're going to close for a month or so, just because this is a place that you want to be busy, that you want to be full, that you want to have that energy level in, you know, and I don't want to open it if it's just one or two people are in there or something like that. So it's a little bit different, and that's just it is. You guys are basing your restaurant calculation, your full service, you know, sit-down, on the fact that I could fit, you know, a hundred and twenty people in here. And it's not that. It's, it's these seating groups that are there for enjoyment. So, and they're there so you can have a good time without being on top of each other.
Thank you. I have no questions and I, with that, I think we can move to comments. Chris, do we need to take a vote on this or, or how should we approach these questions?
Yeah, I think there should be just like a, a formal recommendation. So valid of each.
Okay, of each item.
Who going to make any comments?
Yes, I'm going to move to comments. I just wanted to see where we're going next. Yeah. Uh, is there any public? We'll open it up for public questions. Um, if there's anybody wishing to make public questions or comments and you're online, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine, and if you're attending by phone, and then star six, unmute yourself.
There's no one online.
I don't see anybody in the audience, so we'll move to commissioner comments. Mark?
Um, Mr. Barbou, I, I feel your, your anxiety and your frustration. And I want to remind you that this panel simply reviews what the rules are that have been handed to us.
Right.
Makes the judgment about whether or not the issue in front of us fits into that category. So your frustrations and anxiety are really something that needs to be taken up with the coun- town council because they're the ones that tell us what to do.
I understand.
Thank you, Mark. Mike?
Um, you know, I, workforce housing is a challenge for the town. Um, I think there, the town has good intent and has been quite successful um with getting business owners that create the demand for workforce housing to help support that. Uh, I am concerned that it's, this is a, a difficult work or task for the, for the town to, to legislate or police. I do support um, I do support it in this case, but it, it seems like a fine line between a waitress serving and somebody walking up to a counter and picking up food. And I, I see, I foresee problems in the future with other restaurateurs. Uh, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Matt?
Um, I also echo those same concerns. It seems uh, it seems like something that could be implemented on the front end, but like, much like you said, uh, Brooklyn's was forgotten after a little bit, and then it becomes a, you know, a regular waitress-served restaurant scenario. So I would, I would, I would uh hope that the recommendation from the commission also include uh not only the employee generation of six employees or nine employees, but also that that business model stays as counter service and bar as, as, you know, we, as recommended, you know, by the information that's been presented to us.
Thank you, Matt. Ellie?
Um, yeah, so I can, it's very complex. I can see the town has a lot of good intentions with their rates they have. Um, I do feel like I, I love what you're doing with the lower density. I mean, my biggest complaint going out is it's so loud. I can't hear my friends, and that's why I go out. Really even care about the food anymore. I've gotten to that point. Um, so, um, but I do feel like we have this code and you, you're unfortunately fitting under the definition. I don't even know if you fit under any of the definitions right now.
Well, and that's, you know, the very beginning of the code says it's if you're changing the intensity, and I'm not changing. So that's the very top line of this code is saying if you're changing the intensity of employees, and I'm not, and that's what's kind of confusing to me. You can, you know, say, okay, well, be, based on this chart and this graph that you, you know, you, you should be changing the intensity, but we're, we're not a typical restaurant. We are not just a bunch of tables in a room. You know, these are eight individual groups of, you know, tables and, you know, we are going to have cocktail service going out there.
How much does it cost for a third-party study? Do we have any numbers?
We're, we're calling this comments now. We'd like to.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So um, so I guess I'm, I'm leaning against.
Okay.
Your, what you're, but, but I think that maybe a third party could come in and give some evidence.
Thank you.
I also think the conditions of approval are like too extensive. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Alan?
Um, I think uh my main concern is setting precedent, just like you did with, with Highside. And I was actually very skeptical. Uh, I thought, I believe Highside's model, their experienced operators, I was skeptical of Faux Real's model of increasing capacity and not, and I voted against that for that reason. Um, I think I'm willing to overlook my, uh, to push aside my skepticism based upon your experience in running successful restaurants here. I do foresee a problem that you get a um, uh, uh, what's it called? A, a high-care client from maybe a different country or a different part of our country. And uh, and they are told they have to go pick up their food at the counter.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a concern.
That, um, you know, and, and maybe you're, maybe one of the, I mean, I'm sure, you know, which could also affect what they think of the service, but that's something you'll have to deal with.
Well, I can also drop all the food.
Yeah.
I mean.
In the comment section now.
So anyway, that just, uh, but I uh, uh, I mean, if, I think if you were a new applicant or new to a restaurant business, I might be uh uh much more skeptical uh of the model. But uh, I'm, I think I'm a little more open now in terms of, you know, um, uh, how you can run this with that number of employees.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, I'm in agreement with, with um my fellow commissioners on, on, with Mike on, on his comments about the town and how they've worked very hard to provide employee housing and the costs of that and, and, and the subsidies that we provide. Um, and, and part of this program is, is to, to have the business owners in town to support that. Um, and I, I am in support of that. Um, I, I, I have a little problem with the, with the, the food service in that you're going to be providing the food from other restaurants. And I know you're stating that um, it won't add any other work to your other employees at other restaurants. And I, I have a hard time really buying into that. Um, uh, you'll be adding other work to them. And, and that, in effect, is another employee in my mind. Uh, so I, I have a hard time supporting a deviation on those terms. So um, I'm going to have a hard time voting yes on that.
Okay.
That's, that's what I have. But thank you.
Sure. Can I make any more comments or later?
We, we have to follow the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so Chris, how do you want to do this? You want to vote on each question? A vote?
I think you can, I think you can go down the line and you can just acknowledge what your vote is for each one.
Okay.
Just instead of going through twice.
Okay. All right. Um, Mark, would you like to answer the, the three questions?
Let me read them.
I could go while he's reading.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Um, one, no. Two, yes. Three, none.
Matt?
Uh, sorry, I'm just rereading them just so I can. I would support a deviation with the uh conditions um that are provided and possibly bolstered. To uh, yes, um, a third party would be good, and uh, I don't have any. A third party would be good and I don't have any other feedback.
Thank you, Matt. Ling?
I'm number one. I do not support a deviation. Number two is I support a third-party analysis. And three, my recommendation is that maybe since these are becoming more popular, the speakeasy style, we should add a category to our table. That's my suggestion to the staff.
Great.
Eventually, not now.
Thanks, Ling.
I'd say yes on one with my fellow commissioner, Matt Smith's suggestion that they're bolstered. Two, yes, perhaps that would be the bolstering, that, that some kind of analysis or audit is done once a year to confirm that the numbers are meeting what was stated here. And three, fellow commissioner Elaine Gort's suggestion as well, I support. Actually, I forgot what it was, but I like the idea.
We need a in-between.
Yeah, and yeah, and I think we, we have had a work session before on changing categories for different establishments.
Thanks, Alan. Mark?
I'm, I'm conflicted enough with the requirements that the town places on businesses, in this case restaurants, are difficult for the entrepreneur to accommodate and make happen. Having said that, I think that the town has done their best to try to spread the cost of the employee housing around. And in this case, that cost falls on the entrepreneur who wants to start a new restaurant concept in this space. And while I am sensitive to that and supportive of that feeling, I think that the way that the, the code is written, I would have to vote no on question number one. Yes on two, and I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Mark. As I said, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time supporting a deviation on, on, from the employee generation table. So I'm going to vote no on, on that one. Requiring the applicant to obtain a third-party analysis, it seems that if we're voting no on supporting a deviation, that that becomes moot. Am I correct in stating that?
I think you're right.
So that's a moot point and I have no other further feedback. I think that's it.
I had four noes.
Three.
I had four noes and two yeses.
Oh, he said no, I said no, Mark said no.
Elaine said no, Mark the no, Ethan said no, Mike the no, yeah.
Or two. Okay, so your, your application for deviation has been denied.
You know, it, it's horrible for this to happen and I will no longer be building any restaurants in Breckenridge. You guys are so anti-business, I think it's insane.
Thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
What a shame.
Okay. We can move on to town council update, I imagine. That'll be Chris.
Yeah, give me one second.
May at its discretion hire an independent third-party consultant. So that's not actually decided by us. The town may at its discretion hire an independent third-party consultant to verify the evidence. I don't know who makes that decision, but I don't think it's us. It doesn't say. The planning commission at its discretion.
But we're just asking our opinion if we supported if they did that.
Right.
A moot point anyway.
Yeah, I think if, if, if one was a.
I wonder why applicant can't anyway.
All right, well, town council update. Kind of like the, the first kind of planning issue was the reading of a bill amending some of the neighborhood preservation policy items, which is, we're kind of breaking it into two phases, but the first phase was just reducing the allowed setbacks for large lot, single-family homes outside the conservation districts, eliminating the relative policy, which was a combined fifty feet. And then establishing, or sorry, that was what was allowed previously under absolute, but the recommended under the relative was a combined forty. Now establishing that reduced setback, a combined forty as the absolute. So really a small haircut, if you will, on setbacks. EV charger points were reduced to a maximum of one point for two or more chargers. And then also a maximum of one point for having ten or more EV capable or ready spaces. And then the final code amendment from this bill was eliminating eligibility of positive points under landscaping for individual, single-family lots or duplex lots. You still, if you had a planned, single-family or duplex neighborhood, you could potentially get positive points if it's planned for, for the entire neighborhood upfront, but looking at an individual basis is no longer eligible. You would just have to meet your requirements for landscaping. So still working on the phase two, which potentially would be a bulk plan or kind of building height amendments and also looking more into building hardening, which is in some ways getting accelerated because there's some new, because of the state statutes where Cliff, you know, provided information before and he's also working with the, the building officials and red, white and blue. So we'll be continuing to work on that particular aspect this fall. And then I, I think we're to try and put together the working group, which is still forthcoming for the, the bulk plan and just look at other items potentially for kind of low-level positive points. They're looking at, considering some of the suggestions that came from the contractors and architects was less is more. So if they only did a two-car garage, they got positive points or. Yeah. They did a smaller footprint or less density. Yeah, I think some of those things that they've come out, we'll, we'll maybe re-explore with, with the group. And then we're also have gotten some other building hardening suggestions from Jay Nelson at Red, White and Blue. So more to come. Just got to get the group formulated. We do have one, yes, and then I think we'll have a couple other architects on there as well to work with staff.
So did you say you would need two EV spaces to get a positive one point?
Yeah, and then it'd be capped at one positive point. They, they kind of thought like there's maybe some benefit in, and also just having a combination of some low-level points, but they just thought like just being able to put three and get three points is a little too generous at this point.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So we had a presentation on the Blue River Pathways project, which is really the Blue River corridor through town. Got some input on some signage and other priority, priorities within, with that project. And, you know, I, I think that the signage was probably the, the item that was discussed the most is the, the graphics, the font. We're internally having some more discussion because we're really trying to keep all of our wayfinding signage consistent and Open Space just went through a really extensive wayfinding update where they'll start rolling out some of those new signs in the Illinois Creek area. So kind of after a fact, we're thinking we, this is really kind of also related to kind of quasi-open space along the river and a pathway that we should be more consistent with the style and messaging across the board. Which always, always gets complicated when you have different, different projects or slightly different entities kind of managing. But I thought that was a very good comment from Open Space after the fact.
So is the Blue River Pathways scope signage or is it hardscape and softscape too?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a, I guess a variety of improvements and that's a good question. They also talked about the Wellington lot off of Main Street where essentially half of the lot would be removed for some park space and more of a breadcrumb trail from the parking structure of the Main Street. That was kind of the other big component. I guess that was, that was discussed during the work session. And the council was generally supportive of that with also being sensitive to not removing any more parking than was necessary to have a safe and attractive corridor down from the parking structure.
Sure.
Let's see. The, the twenty twenty-four IECC Energy Code adoption, it's kind of their final, final work session. It'll be going to a first reading at this next meeting, but really kind of a, a summary of all the, the, the input that was received during the public process regarding this. The building department did get a generous grant from the state to be an early adopter of the international, forgive it, I C, I E C C stands, International Energy something code, conservation code. But they did, we did kind of after accepting that, we realized that it's really tied to all the other I codes, which were scheduled for an update this year or this coming year in twenty twenty-six in January. And the terms of the grant did allow us to adopt it early, but not have it go into effect to the date that we were planning to have the updated other I codes, which works better because we were worried that just having a month or two disconnect really would kind of wreak havoc on that timeframe that you submitted where you have inconsistencies with the code, but when that was brought up to the state, they were supportive of us kind of, I guess, having those all go into action at the same time, which is January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. Does, does that code have any restrictions on new natural gas appliances? No, I don't know off, off the top of my head. Because I'm just saying, because the town and the county are not allowing XL, they're giving XL one year for the temporary capacity of gas, but not allowing them to expand the pipeline. But the town isn't doing anything to encourage or require people to not get new or replace their existing gas appliances. So I don't understand how we can reduce them. I just was curious if that was coming. Yeah, I think there is, like, just from reading the memo, I think there is like a suggested pathway to basically, I guess, I think tapered demand overall on gas, that's the, one of the intents of this, but I can't explain off the top of my head exactly what that pathway, but I know there is a pathway that coincides with that. Okay. Direction that.
We, we do also have our renewable energy mitigation plan fees, our rent fees, which charge for natural gas usage mostly outdoors. But then we also limit gas fireplaces for residential properties. So it is also kind of contained and otherwise as well.
I believe XL is going to start a program where they're going to incentivize people to switch over to full power, full electrical.
Yeah.
Which would require, you know, changing out panels and loads and all that. But until such time, it wouldn't really be possible for many people to switch out their gas because they don't have the capabilities for electric. So.
All right. And then we also had the, the town project hearing for the runway subdivision, which you had reviewed the week prior and recommended approval, where it's just really breaking that, the area into tracks for conveyance to the, to developer. But those are the highlights from the, the town council meeting.
Great, thank you, Chris. Anybody have any other issues or questions?
I have a question about sidewalk on the east versus west side. Did we talk about it?
No, it was noted in Sarah's presentation, so I'm.
You'll have a chance to bring that up again.
Sarah noted both in the memo to council, the report, as well as touched on it during her verbal presentation.
So it, it is a note that we have for future construction. Engineering will be the ultimate decider of where the sidewalk is located, but we can have an internal discussion that it's preferred to be on the east side, you said?
The west side.
You.
East side.
Yeah.
On the west side.
I can tell you that previous plans I've seen had it on the other side because of the bus route. So we can, we can talk about it internally, but in their planned space for it is included in that slatted fifty feet. That'll be along Floridora, but.
Always good to talk about things like that earlier than later. That's mine.
With that, we will adjourn the September second, twenty twenty-five commissioner meeting at six sixteen.
Can I ask you a question about, don't we typically have the conference? Isn't there typically an APA state conference in October?
Typically, is there's a.